Top of the hour, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, roll call please.
Supervisor Gunning.
Here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Halk.
Here.
Trustee Micus.
Here.
Trustee Lannan.
Here.
Trustee Worley.
Here.
Clerk Cody here.
All right, that brings us to item four, which is approval of the agenda. Looking at this lengthy agenda, is there any motions that we have to amend or adjust the agenda as it's stated?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and put J up into A and move everything else down to allow both for the issue to be discussed having more time and refreshed to deal with it, and I think that would be hopefully the way to do it and help them get out of here too early herself. So J, I'm making a motion that we move J to A and move A on to B and everything else down from there.
Second there.
All right, we have a motion in the second discussion.
Wasn't that the one, didn't she ask for a closed session, no?
Correct, so then we would make, we had to do a closed session.
Okay, so the closed session would be first then?
Close and open, we would do.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify for...
We'll put J into the A category. That's okay with everyone.
So should we vote on it? So I guess we'll vote on it.
Right.
This would be to move a new business, item J to item A and everything down accordingly. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So we do have one opposing vote on that, the motion does pass and the agenda is adjusted. Okay, move on to item seven, public comments. And this is going to be for three minutes regarding items on this agenda and this agenda only. We are not here to answer questions, so if anyone would like to come forward, please come forward, state your name.
Thank you for recognizing me, Kirk Smith, representing Gemini Capital Management. I'm from Breckenridge, Michigan, beautiful Breckenridge, Michigan. And I'm here this evening, under 10A, I would have voted nay on your motion too because I wanted to go first, but in any case, we own the Michigan Works Building out in the, near the industrial park. I'm going to put a photovoltaic system on 73 KW to service about 85% of the electrical requirements. You need time?
I hope you have enough insurance in case I fall. I'm supposed to have an armchair. Is this it? Holy mackerel. I don't know whether you have an age, you were a record for attendees, but I think I could push it. Is that it? Yeah. All set, landing. Sorry for the interruption.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So, we applied for an application to, you know, permit to install the system and found that we didn't have zoning on the books to allow for in a commercial industrial application. And then apparently, I'm just catching up here, you guys have a system in place where you're starting to update your ordinances. This was one of the ordinances that was on that list. We just asked that it got pulled up to the front, and we haven't asked for any text changes, any changes at all whatsoever. So, the reason for our sense of urgency is we've got a federal tax credit grant application that needs to be filed, and also a USDA REAP grant application and a deadline where construction needs to be completed by 12/31/19. So, we should be able to do that. We've had our down payment on the system in place since the middle of March, it's just, we need to get going, so anything you can do to help us, would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I sit down, or?
Oh, we can't. Banner.
No, if you need to ask me something later, I'll be here.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yep. And we are in public comment right now, and so this would be three minutes regarding items on this agenda, if anyone would like to come forward.
Hi, I'm Terry Somerville, and my address is 3678 St. Andrews Drive in Mount Pleasant here. I just wanted to say a couple things on the agenda. I think we need to give more time to this water ordinance to think about it. I just think that it's really important to take time, this is a really important thing. And there's some concerns for me about how I'm afraid that it's going to stifle growth in our community and our township. And with this great township that we have, I think that we're trying to promote growth, and I think this water ordinance is not a good thing the way it is right now. I think we need to take some time and maybe table it for now, because I think the way it is, it's going to stifle that. In regards to Pat De Priest, are you Union Township tax assessor? As a large taxpayer in Union Township, I just want you to know that we are very satisfied with her fairness and judgment, and she is very professional, and I would strongly recommend her staying in this position here in the township. I think she's doing a great job. Also, while I'm up here, I wanted to thank everyone on the board for their community service, and especially Ben Gunning as our supervisor, for trying to do the right thing for our Union Township and the people in it. I think he's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And would anyone else like to come forward at this time?
I'm sorry, opposed to the wire. Richard Fay, 1239 East Brumfield Road, 60 years, since 1960 at Riverwood, and I've been through a lot. And one of the things that I would like to comment on is that there's still a lot to happen in Union Township. One of the things that we're very concerned about, and other people aren't very concerned, and I don't know about board members, what your feelings are, but we're sitting out there within a quarter of a mile of water. The city has it, the township has it, another quarter of a mile down the road. And, we have two subdivisions to the east of me, and I know very well that some of the water problems that go into the river, you've heard about them, could be partially from that subdivision, it's old, and you can know what happens to septic tanks. Anyway, two subdivisions, one to the west of us, it's on the river, a lot too, all of them would pretty much, and I don't know whether there's a study going on, that's what I want to ask, do you people have, because the impression that I got from the manager, nothing is being done, it's kind of a two-person decision, the water person and sewer and himself, that makes the decision where water and sewer goes? That shouldn't be the case. There should be a committee that sets high priority, where does the water and sewer go next? And does the general person in our township have an idea how kind of funds we have for that? I asked the question and got, ooh, I don't know, not for sure. A lot goes into maintenance. I didn't get an answer, how much money goes into water and sewer, and where's it going to go? I don't think that's right. I've spent not just a million, several million dollars in taxes, property taxes. You didn't get it all, you know, school and cetera, but you've gotten a fair share. And I'm not getting represented very well on the future of water and sewer coming our way. We haul out four to five tank loads every spring, every fall. Do we need it? Sure we need it. And what's going to happen if we don't get some action? We're going to put in our own. Because I've already talked with people that do a water sewer system. They said, anything that we can do, we can do it better than what your government can. He said, so you better look at our system, we've done a lot of for the last 40 years. So all, I'm not threatening anybody, because I like our township, but I wouldn't stay there that long. But I'm telling you, there's a lot of funds, and I haven't heard yet, or has anyone that's a trustee, know how much money we have for developing water and sewer? If you know, let me know right now, because I didn't get it from the manager. I didn't mean to sound gruff, but I'm telling you, how many of you, and you can answer this if you want to, and if you can't, how many of you have actually been in business and done a tax roll? Where you had to pay up money for your help, your labor? You were? You've had a labor bill where you had to be a tax payroll? I said tax roll, I meant payroll. You raised your hand? No? Nobody here has had to do a payroll? I know Ben has. Two people? That's a different feeling. I'll tell you that, I've done it for 60 years, nobody's ever had a check bounced either. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Keep on logging, but I'd look into that water and sewer thing, because I sure got a blind check when I tried to find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to come forward at this point? State your name, please.
Doug LaBelle, 955 Meadowbrook Drive. Just a couple of comments, one about the amendments that are in front of you tonight regarding water and sewer. I'm in agreement with Terry Somerville, these need some more time. I don't think this rectifies the issue. There's an REU issue with the way that people are being billed. I don't think that this amendment corrects that issue. The second point I'd like to make is regarding to Pat De Priest. I've served on the Board of Review with her for the last two years. She is very competent, she knows what she's doing, she's very knowledgeable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we've ran through, unless somebody else is in the hall?
Nope.
All right, so at this point in time, let's close public comments, and we will move on to reports and board comments. See, we have some open slots, I think we're still looking what Sustainability Committee and Citizens and the Sidewalk Committee, correct? Are the two that we're currently looking at vacancies? Or sidewalks filled? Looks like five sidewalks is filled, so it's just basically sustainability. And I don't know if Mr. Micus has had any discussions with anyone at this point that's willing to fill that open void.
Well, regarding the sidewalk and pathways committee, Ben, my term expires near the end of July, so at our meetings next month, you know, I'd be willing to serve again if it's the choice of this board to serve again as the board representative on the sidewalk and pathway committee for another term.
Thank you. I thought I had heard that somebody else was moving out of the area, or is everybody on that board been, I see that there's expiration dates in August, but as far as you know, everybody's...
Yeah, definitely. All the members that are on that committee qualify to be on the committee.
Okay. All right, and so we just have the sustainability vacancy, which is, looks like expired in 12/31 of 2018, so that'd be a 12/31 of 2020, and so I guess we look at the future of that task force and decide where we go from here, right? So, all right.
Looking at what Phil had just brought up, that position would be open only to someone sitting at this table. So unless someone would like to throw their hat in the ring for that position, that's If not, I would make a motion to take care of this business and nominate him, like us to serve in that position for another two years, unless anyone else would like to challenge him for that position.
Support.
We should need support, okay, all right. Strike while iron's hot is what you're doing then?
Just taking care of business right in front of us.
Not going to give them any opportunity to back out of this one. All right, so at this point in time, we do have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Mr. Micus, would you like to interject at all, your...
Nothing in addition to what I've said, I'm, you know, honored to be selected to work on this important committee.
All right. Well, I'd like to keep the continuity, and we, you know, we've had good work out of that group, so any further discussion, we'll put this up for vote, and this would be an expiration date, let's see, the sustainability is two-year term, so you'd be looking at, excuse me, the sidewalk committee, that's a two-year term, and you would be an expiration date of nine, or seven, 7/26 of 2021. So this would be to affirm the nomination of Phil Micus for a two-year term expiring 7/26 of 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Micus.
Thank you. Perhaps in future meetings, we might want to amend the expiration date to coincide with my term.
Makes sense.
Yep. Well, we're just assuming that you're going to go to victory, so...
It would be a new board, so I think it would only be for this term.
Yep. All right. So, Planning Commission and ZBA updates, Peter?
Good evening, board. The ZBA met earlier this month, they had two items on the agenda. One was for a variance or accessory building height. This variance, we held a public hearing for, no action was taken, they actually postponed, making a decision to give the applicant more time to look at their HOA Homeowners Association bylaws, to see if there's any more information or rules that could pertain to their request, and so they made no action after the public hearing. The second item, we held a public hearing for outdoor display products, it was a variance sought for a setback requirement. The, this was brought about by a violation complaint that we discovered, and the applicant sought a variance as a remedy. The ZBA decided to vote no, they denied the variance, but they gave the applicant until January 1st, 2020, to come into compliance with the setback requirement. This would involve either selling or removing the outdoor display product that's currently for sale. They also amended their regular scheduled meeting for July 3rd, they've moved that regular meeting to now July 9th, they figured that was a better meeting time than the July 3rd meeting, which would take place before the 4th of July holiday. We do have one item on that upcoming ZBA meeting as well, too. The Planning Commission, they had the regular meeting, we had five items on the agenda. The first item was a final plat review that you guys have before you now, they recommended approval of that final plat, and so the last step is with a final approval, that court ordered plat amendment to the village of the city. They also held a public hearing for Republican institutional use by the Isabella Conservation District. They did make a recommendation to not approve, that recommendation will be making its way to this board in the near future. They held a, well, they actually, they took a postponed item from 5/21, this was the Lone Maple Development Text Amendment for Solar Energy. The item was brought back at the June meeting, it was postponed in May to give the Planning Commission time at a special meeting to discuss the text amendment with our consultant. After doing that, they brought it back to the June meeting, and after holding the public hearing in May, and they recommended approval of that text amendment, which is now before you today, is the first introduction. We also had a site plan approval for the Mitchell's Deli McGurk Mini Storage Deli, which also includes the expansionable filling station, a special use that this board recently approved. The site plan was approved on three conditions, one, a lighting plan submitted and approved by staff, township utilities requirements adhered to, and dumpster enclosure provided. And so the site plan was reviewed on those conditions. The final item, we had a reconsideration of a special use for Mercantile Bank, a special use in a site plan was approved last year. Since that time, the bank will no longer be using, utilizing the drive-through, which was the special use portion of the project. They were reducing the size of the building from two stories to one story, and they're not using the drive-through, and so through the ordinance, the Planning Commission reconsidered the special use and decided to void it, and so if the future, if the applicant or any other future applicant that owns the property would like a drive-through, we would have a new special use hearing and application for that drive-through. So that's what they did at their regular meeting. We also had a chance to meet with the consultant, McKenna, we went through sections six through 10 of the new proposed zoning ordinance. Previously, we had gone through sections one through five. We weren't able to get all through six through 10, although that was the goal. Section six is quite large, I believe it's probably the largest section in the new proposed ordinance. We were able to get through 75% of it. We will continue though, we're looking at special meetings in July, to continue working through sections six through 10, and then we'll reconvene with the consultant. The Planning Commission felt it was a better use of time to continue going through those sections without the consultant, and then to give their feedback to the consultant at another time. So, that's what we've been up to.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, we have our monthly activity report that we've all looked at, and as we move on to item D, board member reports. Let's start with Mr. Lannan.
Yeah, I have some reports for the board, beginning with my attendance at the June 18th Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting. Couple of things that went on there was, the Isabella County Sheriff's Office asked the chairman to sign an agreement for expanded water patrols out at Lake Isabella, and for road patrols for the village of Lake Isabella, and that passed unanimously. It's been a contract that has, has some history to it, it's been going on for a few years. Also, there was about 36 acres of farmland from the James Schumacher parcel that went into the MDA Farmland and Open Space Program. It's only going in for a period of 10 years. Recently, I brought some information on a previous parcel that went into the Farmland and Open Space Program, that was 90 years. But, my understanding is that this is a new acquisition of property for him that has been in the program already, so there's about 10 years left in that program, so that was approved by the county. And finally... And, uh, finally, the Region Seven in for the fiscal year twenty twenty. And, uh, the amount of the value of that, my understanding was approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for a three-year period. And that was moved and approved. That's what took place at the county meeting. I also attended a council of governments meeting in the county building that, on June nineteenth, that's where elected officials from townships, all the townships in the county come together. And Sheriff Maine, uh, gave a presentation in regards to the condition, the state of the current jail structure, and then proceeded to give a tour for all in attendance through the jail. And, uh, trying to, uh, show us how it is today. It's been in place for, serving us, the county, for sixty years, and, uh, the hopes is, you know, to understand that, and understand that, uh, and buy into the belief that, uh, the county is in a position and a need for constructing a new jail. He also, um, wanted all board members and, uh, citizens to know that they're vil- very willing to give tour, tours to, uh, any groups, even s- very small groups of people who are interested in tour- touring the facility, and to learn for themselves, um, what the state of the jail is today. And, uh, I also, along with a couple, with another board member, uh, last night and our manager, I took up the Michigan Townships Association's opportunity to go to a workshop in regards to township assessing. And so I had a, an opportunity to listen to a master, uh, assessor, as well as, uh, the Michigan Township Association's employee who, uh, hails from the assessing area, talk about township assessing, how it's so important for board members to understand, uh, the assessing functions, um, the history of it, how it impacts a township. So, I found that to be very enlightening. I have a inch-thick, uh, handout of information that, uh, goes into details of various areas, and I'll have that filed in the, uh, office.
Thank you. Phil?
Um, Ben, um, my report is actually a question about another board. The Cultural, the Cultural and Recreation Commission, we have one member that's a representative on that commission. And, um, uh, as long as we've been on this board, we, uh, haven't had a report from them, and I was wondering if we could request a report, uh, on, you know, the activities of the, and actions of the CRC.
I know who's the representative on that.
Anybody in agreement with that? Pardon me?
I have no idea who our representative is on that.
Uh, Brian Smith.
Oh, Brian Smith, that's right, that's right, that's right. We did that way back at the first, first year, I think, didn't we? Appointed him.
Yeah, as it is, uh, you know, we get reports from other, um, commissions and boards, and I think it would be good if we could have a report on that.
Yeah.
Phil, you know, that's kinda interesting that you bring it up, bring it up as you go to what was originally put down as item H under New Business, under, uh, Board Commission and Community Linkage. I brought that very topic up, and not only listed that, uh, particular board that you speak of, the, uh, Culture and Recreational Board, but also some of the other boards that, and committees that do not come to that annual meeting. And, um, I will talk a little bit more about that later.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's suspend the topic now and wait for that agenda item. Thank you, Tim.
I'll have to communicate with Mr. Smith then.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I went to a road commission meeting, June thirteenth. Um, they approved buying, they leased a road grader in two thousand fourteen. They decided to outright purchase that. They approved buying, if everybody knows where the road commission building is, the property to the west of that was an auto dealership, a used car dealership. They approved buying that building and property, and then when they're building their new building, they're gonna move over there. That's gonna be their offices for a temporary basis. Our gravel roads were completed this morning. I went, I drove every one that they did. They all look in pretty good shape. So, they'll let it get packed down, then they're gonna go through, great, and then Brian, I'm here in a couple of weeks. They just wanna get packed down for now. So, there's another meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, Kim?
Um, Texas are, um, committed, printed, and are be- I'm stuffing and folding them right now. Well, not right now, but, um, in the process of stuffing and folding. And they will be at the post office on Friday, and a mailbox is Saturday, so.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Norm?
I know, you're so excited.
I have nothing to report tonight from the tribe. Please.
At the city meeting, they, there was a presentation by the planner, Jacob Kane. And then the other big thing was they approved to keep the Pickard Street at four lanes and not to move forward with the road diet, but... And then I also attended the MTA Township Assessing, and I do urge other boards members to go to that, because there's quite a bit to learn from it. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Um, EDA, we, um, had a presentation, um, by Goodron Associates on the master plan for Jamison Park. Um, so, um, at our next meeting, um, we'll discuss, putting together a subcommittee, looking into that project and deciding exactly, um, what the EDA is willing to do and what they'd like to fund. So, alright, um, that closes item eight and moves on to item nine, which would be the consent agenda. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda?
Ben, I reviewed the consent agenda and moved that we approve the consent agenda for today.
Support.
We do have a motion and a support discussion? I have, um, I guess one question on item G. Um, I look at that particular item on there, and, um, I guess I have a question on to, um, having worked on a lot of machinery and utility tractors and diesels, and looking at a nine hundred and fifty hour, um, reading on the vehicle that we own, nine hundred and fifty hours is, in a lot of cases, basically just broken in. And so I have a question on what the hydraulic issue is, and, um, whether it's repairable as opposed to spending eleven thousand dollars on a new tractor. So I don't know, who can answer that question? What's the hydraulic issue?
I don't know what the specific issue is, but I can find it out from our children.
I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable.
It's not on the consent agenda.
This is on the consent agenda.
Yeah, Ben, when these items are on the consent agenda, um, they're really not for discussion. We should have perhaps removed that item from the consent agenda before we got to it. Sure there could be discussion on it?
Well, I think that that's an eleven thousand dollar purchase, I'm watching. We should probably have discussed it.
Just in terms of information for you, you may recall that, um, the purchase of the replacement tractor was in the budget that we approved. So we've essentially approved the purchase expenditure of the funds, and now we're just taking the next, um, the next practical step.
Okay. I'd just like to clarify from my end, and I think, um, it was mentioned before, is this a want or is it a need? And in the future, when we have something like this, um, I would like more specifics on, when we say hydraulic issue, what is the hydraulic issue and how much does it cost to fix it? As opposed to spending an enormous amount of money on another tractor that might not be needed. So, that'd be my clarification moving forward.
There were, uh, three bids, and, uh, the one that we're approving is the lowest of the three bids with Tillman. Um, also, um, the, the hours of the tractor are nine fifty, but the year of the tractor is nineteen ninety-nine, so it's a twenty-year-old tractor. So we're basically upgrading our fleet, uh, with something newer. Um, and in the process, we got a, uh, ten thousand dollar trade-in, so that reduced a twenty-one thousand dollar purchase to eleven thousand with the switch over. So, um, again, I think that it was, you know, cost-effective in that regard.
Okay. I, 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 I agree with what you're saying, except that I disagree from the standpoint that it must be a pretty dang nice tractor to get ten thousand dollars out of it. So, again, I think in the future, I think we continue to spend money, sometimes needlessly, just because we have it. Um, so, we have an item that sh- that can be repaired. It'd be nice to have had. It's gonna cost this much to repair it. It's gonna cost this much to replace it, because that's what we do when we run a business.
Perhaps it would have been nice to have that when we, you know, that discussion when we approved the budget months ago.
Well, obviously, the, there was not a discussion on, um, the hydraulic leak at that point in time. So anyways, so we're at this point in time, we'll bring this to vote. We do have a motion and a second, and this would be to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is approved, consent agenda, and we move on to item ten. We've moved item J up to item A, and this will be a discussion, um, on the appeal of the disciplinary action, and this is not an action item, I do not believe. This is the way that you stated, I believe, a discussion before it's requested to go to a closed session.
This item is a result of the assessor appealing a disciplinary action? So this is her opportunity to make that appeal, and, so I would, I would think you'd call the assessor up to, so she can have her opportunity.
I don't see our assessor here.
Right here.
The closed session question. At one point, uh, the assessor had requested the appeal be done in open session, and then more recently today, she'd requested it be done in closed session. So you should ask her what her preference is, because it's really up to her.
There's an attorney on the way here, so she wants us to go on to the next one and come back. Because we're waiting on the attorney.
Okay.
What's the problem?
We're waiting on an attorney. Her attorney's on her way here, on the way here, so she has asked if we could go on to the next and come back, so that her attorney is present.
She has a chance to be represented correctly. So we'd need to have, obviously, a motion at that point in time to move this item down. We do have the approval on the agenda, so this would have to be an amendment of that, I would have to think.
So I'd make a motion to continue on with our new business items sequentially as they're listed, and when, uh, Mr. Priest's attorney arrives, that, uh, at the conclusion of the item we're on, that we, um, hopefully can slide her item A in at that point.
I support that.
That's a good motion, Tim.
So, motion, support, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and item A becomes item A again. And so this is going to be solar energy systems regulations, Lone Maple LLC. Right, Mr. Stulgar?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The paperwork for this begins on page fifty-four of your agenda, and as was indicated, uh, earlier, it's a consideration for the introduction of the zoning text amendment, ordinance two zero one nine dash zero four, to publish notice for the adoption of said ordinance, um, in the paper. And what this has to do with, it was briefly mentioned during public comment, this past spring, Lone Maple Development requested a site plan review for the construction of, at the time, it was being described as accessory solar panels on a, uh, rear yard, in the rear yard of the property. Our current zoning ordinance does not, uh, contemplate, uh, those type of, uh, uses. It only, as it relates to solar panels, it only permits solar panels on the roofs of residential structures, and because of that, the site plan was denied and couldn't move forward. At the time of act- application, of course, the Planning Commission has been working on the zoning code rewrite, and one of those sections that was gonna be added to the code, zoning code, was a, was a solar energy component. So there was a draft of that ordinance in play, and so what the parties agreed to do was, um, the applicant was able to review that, uh, draft of the, of the solar text amendment. They thought they could work within that, uh, draft. In May of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, uh, regarding this text amendment, and the, that the Planning Commission had made the decision to, let's carve out this section of the zoning code rewrite, because we had an applicant that wanted to, uh, do some business in town, and otherwise, they were gonna wait till the end of this whole process, which could be December or early next year. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing in May and forwarded their request to the, or this amendment to the county, as, as we do by rule. On Janu- on June fourth of this year, the Planning Commission at a special meeting, as was indicated, considered this item, and, um, they then, at the most recent, I think it was a regular meeting, June eighteenth, the Planning Commission recommended the adoption of the text amendment, uh, to the Board of Trustees, so that's why this item's for, before you tonight. It is, um, would normally have been part of the whole zoning code rewrite, but they thought it made sense to carve this out and accelerate, uh, the approval of this, or the consideration of, of this, uh, item. So tonight, it's to have it for a first reading, and if the, and if it is held, if first reading's held and you choose to move forward, the amendment would be published in the local paper, and it would be in front of the Board of Trustees for final consideration at the next appropriate Board of Trustee meeting.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we introduce zoning text amendment ordinance two nineteen dash oh four, move to publish notice for adoption on July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, in the Morning Sun newspaper.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
I have a question for the applicant. You guys purchased the Michigan Works Building then?
We developed it initial.
Oh, okay. It's still gonna be Michigan Works.
To my knowledge.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's the government, so it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Ben, I think it's a good thing that we've, uh, are you finished?
Yeah, no, no.
Uh, good thing that we're, um, updating our ordinance regarding solar, uh, solar energy use. Um, as of now, it's, it's only allowed on roofs of residential structures, so this will allow the backyard, uh, setup at the property we're talking about. It's a great thing, you know, obviously, it doesn't need to be said, because we read about it in the paper and, and on the news, we hear it, about the need to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels for electrical generation, be it coal or natural gas. So this is a great move, um, that we're So this is a great move that we're doing and will make our township more sustainable.
What I like with the new amended, amendment proposal, same thing, it, you know, puts in, it decreases the reliance on petroleum. It decreases our carbon footprint, the greenhouse gas emissions, protects public health and safety, avoids the negative impact on protected resources. Reading through it, it's very comprehensive in terms of its thoroughness. And I understand, you know, for, for Lone Tree, Lone Maple, rather, you know, there is that January 1st, 2020 deadline. Unfortunately, a lot of the incentives for these very things that are enabling the environment to be cleaner are being eliminated starting next year. So time is also the essence for these folks. The other thing, I like the way the, the whole plan is written up. When I looked at, with the PC, they included, it's very comprehensive, it's clearly written, there's many safeguards. So the PC's put in for screening, buffer, lighting, environmental impact. It goes from a special SPR to SUP, building permits, maintenance, a decompensation plan. There's escrow of 150% of the cost for the decompression, decommissioning, if it's, if it is required. So it really covers all bases, and I think it's very clearly written for both an applicant, it protects the township, protects our citizens. So I really like the, the whole deal. I think it looks very good, so definitely will support this.
It's a great location for it.
Yep.
Did we have a motion on this yet?
Yeah.
Yes, we did, yep. Okay. At this point, we have any further discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I had mentioned, I wasn't aware that, I'm quite sure the property is in the township, but it seems to me we have a field of solar panels on North Mission Road in the downtown area.
At Frankie's old place.
Is a setup, so to say we don't have this in the township, I don't think is accurate. So it might be something we need to look into a little bit on that parcel as well.
All right. All right, further discussion? All right, so this is, see, are we looking at a roll call on this, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Gunning?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Micus?
Yes.
Trustee Lanen?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Clerk Cody S.
All right, motion carries. Move on to item B. Item B is going to be to approve the SUP 2019-01, final plat review, amending plat of Village of Isabella City located on South River Road.
This item came before you. Your last meeting is a preliminary plat review. Again, this is a court, I'll describe it as a court-ordered plat amendment. It's coming through the township's planning and board of trustees approval process, because our ordinance requires it. Having said that, this is, I think, purely ministerial in nature, and is, we're just doing it to kind of prevent somebody coming back later on and saying we didn't follow the rules. Because the fact of the matter is, we don't have any say on how, what this plat will look like, as it's a court-ordered item.
So I would move to approve the SUP 2019-01, final plat review, amending the plat of Village of Isabella City located at and on River Road.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion?
We've been through this enough? We know what's going on.
All right, so this would be to approve SUB 2019-01, the final plat review, amending the plat of Village of Isabella City located on River Road South. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to item C in the agenda, which is the approval of an engineering proposal with Gordy Frazier for the replacement of well number one with a new well, well number 11 at the Isabella Treatment Plant.
So there's paperwork on this in your packet that begins on page 120. In 2012 and 2017, the township's water reliability study determined that this well, well number one, which is located at the Isabella Treatment Facility, would need to be replaced in the next five to 10 years or so, due to loss of production and to meet increased demand. The well was originally budgeted and approved to be replaced in 2017. The original scope of work, including, included drilling a deeper well, pretty much right next to the existing well. And to, this would, hope, the plan was to increase capacity from 400 gallons a minute to approximately 700 gallons a minute. Once the, well, prior to that, in May of 2017, then, the township did bid this project out, this well installation. The board approved the recommendation to, I believe it was Peerless, to replace the well, rebuild bids had been received at that point, and an award was made to Peerless. When the work actually got started, it was discovered that the water levels in the immediate area would not support the production gains we were looking to get out of it. We weren't finding the kind of water we needed below 56 feet. And so we halted the project and began to reassess what was going on there. So as part of that exercise, in December of 17, township and Peerless submitted a proposal, a review project to MDEQ, to have them look at this well field and, and provide some input on well sites that could potentially create, produce the capacity that, that we were looking for. And as that work progressed, in November of 18, report came back from MDEQ indicating there were two potential locations within that, I'll call it a well site. One location proved not to be viable due to existing infrastructure. There was a second site located about 500 and some feet to the west of existing well number seven. That was identified as a possibility. Some permits were pulled and test wells drilled to determine viability of this site. And that, that tested out as, as positive. There were determinations made that there was enough water at that, at that site to support up to 700 gallons per minute. Trouble is, that location is quite a bit further away than the original hoped-for site where we were going to drill the new well right next to the existing well. Because it's 500 feet away, now we have transmission lines that we have to put in, connection lines, and site, we got a kind of clear road, so to speak, and other site improvements. So this whole project, and I'm talking a lot about the project, not the specific contract that's before you right now, but this whole project is a $360,000 project. Total construction cost, $304,000. The engineering component, which is before you tonight, $29,500, with $30,000 or so in contingency. Approving this proposal with our engineer will allow the work to continue on this project. The engineering firm would be developing plans, site work specs, the construction services, the typical things they do for these kind of projects. And assuming, and then we'd have to go through a whole permitting process with what used to be called MDEQ, I'm not sure what it's called anymore.
Eagle.
Eagle, thank you. And so there's still, you know, work to be done to get to actual drilling the well and constructing the transmission lines and whatnot. We're unsure at this point if the construction would actually commence in 2019, make commence in 2020. None of this project was budgeted in 2019 because of the uncertainty that we were going through with MDEQ and drilling test wells and all that. So budget amendments would be needed. I will refer back to my earlier comment, though, it was budgeted in 2017. The money was not spent. It exists in fund balance right now. The item before you specifically tonight to continue on with the project is consideration to approve an engineering proposal with Gordy Frazier in the amount of $29,500. Ms. Jennifer Hodges from Gordy Frazier's here, Public Services Department Director's here, if you have any more questions on the project, technical or otherwise. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering proposal with Gordy Frazier in the amount of $29,500 for the replacement of well number one with a new well, well number 11 at the Isabella Treatment Plant.
Support.
Motion, support. Discussion?
So as we go through this, Mark, we'll be seeing additional bids for the other major components that would lead to the actual.
You would see bids for the work related to the site improvements, the transmission, what I call the transmission line. The contract with Peerless to actually drill the well that was approved and executed in 2017 still stands. So that item would not be coming back before you, and they've agreed to hold their price at the 2017 level.
Very good.
That's just the drill, the well, the well drill, the installation of the well component.
Thank you.
I got a question for Ms. Hodges. If I may, I'm sorry, Bill.
No, go ahead.
So I got a question for you, because we are, we've been talking about our water and depending on which well you're downstream from, the quality of the water changes. And that well originally was a fairly shallow well, so typically, the shallower the well, and typically, the better the quality of the water. As you go deeper, it gets a little bit, you know, there's always water down below, but it gets a little bit harsher as you go deeper. So is this the same aquifer that we're dealing with from before, and we're just going a little bit deeper into that aquifer? Or are we looking at a different quality of water than what we've been pulling out of the ground at this point?
No, there is some accuracy to what you say, absolutely. The deeper you go, you potentially risk higher iron, higher hardness.
Sure.
But the well that we're talking about, this new well number 11, is going to be penetrated into the same aquifer seven is, that we put in, and I specifically worked on back in 2007, 2008. So it would be consistent water quality of what we currently experience.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
So as far as the access drive and everything, we're going to be taking bids again to, new bids to clear the additional roadway out and everything?
I'd have to defer to Ms. Smith on that. I know there's a, an access of sorts cut through there. I'm not sure that's the permanent access. So we would be taking bids for all of that type of work. The site development, the laying of the transmission pipe to get from the well up to the existing infrastructure, all that will be bid. And those contracts brought back to this body.
All right, that'll be published then, so everybody will have an opportunity to bid that, all the excavators that want to bid it will have an opportunity?
We'll go through our typical building process, bidding, bidding process that allows open bidding to anybody that's so inclined.
Okay, I just wondered.
All right. Further discussion on this item? All right, so we're going to put this up to vote. And this would be to approve the engineering proposal with Gordy Frazier in the amount of $29,500 for the replacement of well number one with a new well, well number 11 at the Isabella Treatment Plant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous motion does carry. And we move on to our next new business item, which is going to be item D. And this is the township board, who has adopted ordinance number blah blah blah. Okay, this is to amend our ordinance number 1987-9. Mark, you want to lead us in?
Thank you. So we're considering or asking you to consider the adoption of ordinance 2019-4, which amends various provisions of the Water Service Use and Rate Ordinance, currently known as 1987-9, as amended. Page 132 of your agenda packet, you'll find paperwork. This ordinance was introduced to the board, or you all introduced it at your June 12th meeting, and approved for the publication of the ordinance in the Morning Sun, which has occurred. Just to recap, the proposed amendment clarifies language regarding particularly the addition and expansion of buildings, how, how that, those connections are work, work, how they're paid for. You recall that as the board wrestled with the Lux matter, it was identified that there may be some lack of clarity in the ordinance for the layperson to read as they read it. There is no change in how we have been applying the ordinance, interpreting the ordinance from the way it was previously written prior to making this amendment. This is just to add clarity, to hopefully avoid the confusion that was, that existed in some people's mind. There are no changes being made to any of the fixed or variable rates that were approved by the board at your December, when you approved the budget. There was a question brought up at the last meeting. There are some dollar amounts mentioned in the ordinance that have existed in the ordinance for quite some time, and they've changed over time. And they're allowed to change, because there's a clause in the ordinance that allows the board of trustees to reset certain rates and fees from time to time. And that is what the board has done. And so the current rates exist in the fee schedule that's been adopted annually. So that kind of gets to the ordinance that was still on the books, is written as some amount of money for every month. How did that translate into a different amount per quarter? It's because the board took action at a prior time, years ago, to change those rates. And that's how they've been being changed subsequent to now. And that's how they'll be, continue to be, be adjusted. So that is it, and it's for you for final consideration. Thank you.
So at this time, we would look for a motion? A motion on this item?
Yes, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 2019-04, an ordinance amending various provisions of the Charter Township of Union Water Service Use and Rate Ordinance. That was number 1987-9 and as subsequently amended.
Do you have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
Support.
Motion and a support, discussion?
Yeah, as we spoke at our last meeting, this is a clarification of some language to this ordinance. It's, goes along with our ordinance reviews. It has nothing to do with any rate changes. At this point in time, we'll be looking at rate change, potential water rates, beginning real soon as we begin our budget amendments and fee structures. But this simply added some language to clarify for the users, for the township, information on our water service. I mean, basically, what we're doing is replacing a 32-year-old ordinance with better clarity, both for the user as well as the township. You know, I always use the terms process and content. What I see us doing here has to do with the process. We're, we're updating and clarifying the structure, the wording of our ordinance, so it's more user-friendly, more understandable. There's a saying that, that process lends to content. And so in approving this, in terms of the process, in terms of the wording, the clarity, and, and updating the ordinance, I would support that. But also...
But also, to get to the content, I think it's a critical, from based what we've been hearing, what we, our discussion last week, feedback we got then, feedback we got tonight, is that I do think it's imperative that the content address the rates, the fees, the turnoffs, the recapture costs. All these need to be reviewed and amended. And I think that I'm okay with approving the wording change in terms of the process, but I would like to see the content follow shortly, so that, so it's like a kind of conditional, the way I'm looking at this, is that the content follows so that we update that as well. And I would like to see kind of a comparative analysis with other municipalities, maybe similar in size, adjoining our area, maybe like Mount Pleasant, Midland, et cetera, just to get a sense. Maybe our fees, you know, everyone's going to complain about fees and taxes. I mean, that's just human nature. So, but what I want to understand is, is there legitimacy and validation to those complaints? And if so, then those rates should be changed. And probably one of the ways to do that is one to look at our current rates, compare it to other municipalities of similar size in terms of service, surrounding areas well, and then we'll see. Maybe we're right in the ballpark, maybe we're too much. But there's been enough complaints that I've heard over the, in my term, that I want to at least address, like I said, the rates, the fees, the turnoffs, the recapture costs, all that type of thing. So I'm going to be, I'm going to approve the process, the rewording of a 32-year-old document, and update it into the 21st century. But I also want that we will have, you know, at some point in a shorter, rather than a longer period of time, to look at these, the content, which would be the fees and the rates.
I've been on this budget process twice, for 2017, well, I guess 2018, 2019. I've never heard us discuss water rates, or hookup fees, or anything while we're discussing the budget. That's always just taken care of internally. Mercantile Bank down the road here, we just heard tonight that they're going to reduce the size of their building. Well, one of the reasons I, it will help them to reduce the size of the building because it's at a approximately a $50,000 hookup fee for sewer and water. I'm not going to get into fees because I know I've had discussions with board members on this. We're excessively high compared to other communities, and I'm not going to support this water or sewer, because all I think we're doing right now is just covering our butts from previous things that have happened, previous fees, whatever, previous hookups. I think alls we're doing is looking to cover our butts.
I would like to piggyback on those statements, because that's my belief also. I believe that alls we're doing is changing the wording, so it eliminates, minimizes the ability of residents and business owners, like the Luxes, to appeal what I believe is unjust and unfair ordinance. And I cannot vote for either one of these ordinances until we've addressed the content, because this is the first time that we've discussed this, and I'm afraid that if we don't discuss it now, then it won't be discussed. And so I can't ethically, logically, look at this and feel that I'm in favor of this. And I'm not going to talk on the sewer, because this is my talk. And so I decided that what I would do is I would talk to the author of the ordinance. So I contacted Paul Chamberlain, I went to his chambers last week, and we sat for two hours, and we discussed these ordinances. He's the one that wrote them. And what he told me was that at the time that they were written, which was Chelsea Etterbeck was the supervisor, and Bob Sullivan was the supervisor sequentially, it was discussed by him to them, "Are you sure that we want to do this? Are you sure that we want to have this rate structure? Are you afraid that it might hinder growth?" And the response that he received from both of them was, "Let's not do anything about it right now, we'll deal with it in the future." So we're talking 1987, 1990, this is 2019, I believe the future is here. So I think we need to take a close look at the content of these. I like the idea that was brought forward earlier by two of our residents, that we need to take a step back. We need to take a step back before we approve the wording on this, because this, again, I think it takes away the liberty and the right of the residents to appeal these fees. So that's my spiel. Any further content or comment?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I would agree with Norm's position that we should address in the future rates and such, the formula for that, and make a comparison. And that's all good and good. However, that's not the issue before us today. The issue before us today is the language that addresses connection and our addition, expansion of a connected premise, and the water hookup fees and system benefit fees paid at the time of connection. And it's the language that clarifies that. And so I see this important to do tonight, to follow through on this step, and then we can put it on our agenda to do, to do this, to direct the staff to provide us with what we wish to have.
Further discussion?
I would like to see it on the agenda within, like, the next three months or so, to change the rates, or adjust the rates, or see some comparisons.
Do we know how long it will take to get it?
If I could, if I could just interject, I think that's a fine thing, but the discussion about rates is really kind of not this topic. So let's, let's have an agenda item to discuss when we want results, and what we want those results to be, what parameters. I don't think it's the time now to do that, but I want us to do it in the near future.
I guess I'd just say that this is a step forward to get the language in place to improve our ordinance that is quite old, hasn't been visited in some time, but I don't, and so it allows us to springboard forward. I don't think we need to springboard back, I think we need to go forward and have the discussions. So I certainly think updating this language is important.
Any further discussion on this item? I'd like to make this a roll call vote.
Supervisor Gunning?
No.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
No.
Trustee Micus?
Yes.
Trustee Lanin?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
Motion carries. We move to item E. This is, we'll go this item, and then we'll bring Mr. Priest up for.
Right, yeah, that's.
So this is going to be, again.
Hold on a second. Can I? You had said that when we were finished a current item, and if Pat was here with the lawyer, that the amendment was that we would then have the closed session, or however she wanted a session. So I'd say we put this on hold and stick to what we had said on the agenda. The agenda was specifically, that Tim had indicated, was that as soon as we were done with a particular item, and Pat was here with her lawyer, that we would then inject her into the, into the next spot. So I'd say we stop here and follow what we, what we agreed on.
All right. All right, so this would be item J, and this would be moved to item E on the agenda. At this time, I guess, I'm not real positive how we lead into this. Whether we lead in with Mr. Priest's stating her case?
Ask her if she wants to close.
Or close her open session?
I think procedurally, you make a motion to go into closed session, and then we can have a candid check on what the issues are.
Okay, is that what you?
Is that then the request?
So closed session.
Okay. All right, so.
We didn't know if she wanted to do it either way.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we wanted to give her the benefit of the doubt around that too, so.
Well, I'd make a motion to go into closed session to discuss disciplinary action that has taken place against our assessor, and discuss the matter in closed session, as requested by the assessor.
Support.
All right. Motion support. All in favor of going to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call.
And you have to specifically say the words "right" going into closed session.
I provided the members of the board with language that you might want to use.
Yeah.
So you're on solid ground going into closed session.
Hold on a second.
I'll make a motion, I'll try again. I move that the board meet in closed session under section 8A of the Open Meetings Act to consider the suspension of the Township Assessor. The votes.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Support.
As amended. Support is amended.
So.
And then roll call.
Now a roll call, okay.
Supervisor Gunning?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Micus?
Yes.
Trustee Lanin?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
Okay, we go into closed session at this point, so we'd ask everyone to leave the room,